Welcome to this meeting of the Wooddale Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Roy Sye. I'm president or chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Will the secretary please call a roll?
Mrs. Cope?
Here.
Mrs. Schroeder?
Here.
Mr. Kadala?
Here.
Dr. Madonna?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Crusiani?
Here.
Chairman Sye?
Here. I declare our quorum present and we have one public hearing scheduled for tonight. Please note that we will strictly follow the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting procedures that are being displayed on the screen to my right, which is to the audience left copies. These procedures are also available on the table in front of me. If there's anyone in the audience who has not read these procedures or has any questions There is no question, so I will now call the first matter before us this evening. First matter this evening is case number 06-ta-15, City of Wooddale, Texas Amendment to Eliminate Requirement of Court Reporter at Zoning Board Appeal Hearings. Is a petitioner here? Somebody want to give a presentation?
Sure.
Go ahead.
All right.
You have to be sworn in right now.
That's right. Did you just have his word that could test me? Should we do it? Do you think? I do. As outlined on the memo that was included in your packet, on May 3, 2006, the State of Illinois Legislature approved Senate Bill 94-1027. This bill, which was signed into law on July 14, 2006 by the governor, changes the standard of zoning review for zoning decisions from administrative to trial de novo. What this means is that if a zoning board hearing case were to be tried in court, where it was previously ruled that the zoning board hearing had to stand on its own merits before, with the de novo status, the trial would begin anew. There would be an opportunity for testimony to be taken and for evidence to be put into play, where before, the zoning board transcript was the only factor that the court could use in their determining whether the procedures had been followed properly or not. The reason for this change in the state law was to allow municipalities to alter their zoning process from a mini-trial back into an open, interactive, collaborative, flexible process that allows for open discussions and, if necessary, compromise at the hearings to reach a decision. Since the hearing is no longer quasi-judicial and is once again viewed as legislative, a court reporter is therefore not required. However, a record of the proceedings does need to be maintained, and since the City of Wooddale exceeds this requirement because we will maintain a minute taker and our meetings are video-recorded for playback on our municipal cable access channel, which could be used by someone if they did want a verbatim transcript, they could go through that and obtain it off of that, the requirements for a court reporter can be stricken from the zoning code. However, it should be noted that if the petitioner wishes to have one, have a court reporter, they would then notify the zoning board that they will be providing a court reporter, and that will be purely at petitioner's expense.
Okay. I have a kind of a new script here tonight, so I'm kind of blowing by ear here. Roger, please indicate when the notice of the hearing and case number 06-ta-15, Texas Amendment to Eliminate the Requirement for Court Reporter Zoning at the Zoning Board of Appeals hearings.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'm going to turn this over to Ross. He has the file there in front of him. He'll do the publication notice.
This notice was published in the Daily Herald on November 4, 2006, under Control Number 3845005.
Does anybody on the board of Zoning Board of Appeals have any questions for Ross? Mrs. Cope?
Yes, in case of a public hearing without benefit of a court reporter, who will be swearing in the people that will consent testimony?
The zoning code does specify that it is the chairman, the vice-chairman, or their designee. So, we could have our minute taker, we could have the chairman or vice-chairman do it.
That's just my question. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions here. Now, there's a big difference between a minute taker and a court reporter. Now, to me, a court reporter enters the actual testimony, or a minute taker will kind of paraphrase what the action of this board. Now, are we going to have any problem if this hearing or case goes to court? Because when you paraphrase, there's all kinds of different interpretations, where if you have the actual saying or actual wording, I think it would make it a lot easier if we have to go with an attorney. I'll just make this, get it all out of my system here. In your memo of November 7, 2006, in the last paragraph, it says we will maintain a minute taker and our meetings will be video-recorded for playback on our municipal cable access. Okay. Now, if you look at the municipal cable access, nine times out of 10, you miss half the meeting because are we going to improve the audio part of this or the video part of it? Because sometimes you can't even hear it. And then, too, there's some, I notice in your case, Ross, not picking on you, but sometimes when you don't agree with us, you sit there and you make your funny faces and kind of throw up your hands like, you know, what are these people thinking, you know? So, if we're going to use this as a part of a presentation, I think we're going to have to be a little bit more professional when you don't agree with what the board is doing. You know, when I first seen this here, I said, okay, fine, this is something new. And what does de novo mean?
As I stated in my presentation, de novo means to start anew. So, any court proceeding, the question of the transcript is moot because a trial is new. A trial will have to call its own witnesses, get its own evidence, and essentially to come to the determination themselves, the court will come to their determinations themselves, where previously, under the court rulings, it had been the transcript was the only thing that could be brought into court. No witnesses could be called, no new evidence could be brought into play. So, if something was either neglected or misstated in the meeting, that was it. That was the way it was going to be brought forward. There would be no opportunity to make any additions or corrections to what happened at the hearing.
Now, have you got any input from your attorney that was sitting on the board of his preference, whether a minute taker versus a court reporter?
I did ask the attorneys that question, and they stated that statutorily, we are not required to have the court reporter.
No, but I mean for them to, if they have to go to court, which one would they be more comfortable with?
They did say that a court reporter would be beneficial if they was going to court. However, with the de novo status, since they will have to call testimony, call witnesses, enter testimony, bring forward witnesses and evidence, that the transcript is, as I've stated, is not essential.
Any other questions? Mrs. Cope?
Yes. Who ordered this project overview?
That would be myself.
I'd just sort of like to take a little exception to the last sentence of your second paragraph in the project overview. I'd like to take exception, I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on, to your last sentence in the second paragraph of your project overview, saying, "This change allows municipalities to alter the zoning process from a mini-trial back into an open, interactive, collaborative, flexible process that allows for open discussion and, if necessary, compromise to reach a decision."
That's correct.
Well, I sort of beg to differ on that statement. I think that we've been doing this all along, and I wouldn't consider the process a mini-trial.
If the way the courts had reviewed it, yes, it was. Yes, this is a mini-trial. And if something were challenged legally in court, the way we were doing things in an open collaborative matter could have been used against the city in any zoning decisions.
I didn't realize we were, as a board, we were holding trials in courts here.
That was part of the confusion and problem with the way that the rulings had come down regarding zoning board procedures. We are, none of us up here are attorneys. We are laypeople, professionals, and citizens who are trying to come to the best determination regarding the City of Wooddale. We're not holding court. And the way the trial courts had ruled in the past, before this state bill was enacted, the only thing that they could even read or consider if somebody brought forward a zoning challenge was our transcript.
Well, I personally don't think that the whole process did not allow open discussion and compromise. That's all I have to comment on.
Any other questions? Dr. Madonna?
I just have one, and maybe we can get a clarification of it. If, in fact, the zoning board were to have a meeting and we did not have a quorum, it's my understanding that under a court reporter, we can then continue, we can hold a public hearing, so if people were here, they could address the limited members of the zoning board. And at the next meeting, if I were to miss that meeting, I would be able to participate in discussion as long as I had a transcript and was able to read the transcript and get the determination of what had taken place. If that is true, what will happen in the future? Whoever wants answers.
Roger?
I'll take that one. Dr. Madonna, what we will be doing then, we'll be providing you with a copy of the actual CD of the trial, of the meeting, and thereby, you can view that and/or, if necessary, we can provide you with the text commentary in some fashion.
Okay.
Just to kind of walk you through the CD.
Yes, so I would then be able to participate in discussion at the next meeting, even if I had missed the public hearing?
Correct.
That was all I had.
I have a question.
Mrs. Schroeder?
What about the times when the videotape is not working?
The video system was just recently, a system check was done from top to bottom. The system is in fine, working order. If the system were not to be in, were not to be working, we are still meeting our legal requirements by having a minute taker at the hearings. The video is above and beyond our requirements. If there were an instance that it was not working and we did not have a quorum, essentially, yes, we would not be able to have the opportunity to have members that weren't here view that meeting, but there is no requirement to have the meetings videotaped. That is a step that we are doing that's above and beyond the statutory requirements.
Then, we're going back to the issue of a minute taker taking all the information that we need that may not be quite as accurate as videotape.
Mr. Kadala?
Yeah, I think my biggest concern has been mentioned here twice now. I mean, it's technical difficulties, and I appreciate the fact that our video system has been given an A on an overview or a review, but, you know, there's the possibility of user error on this system. I would just like to kind of throw it out there, make sure staff is putting some kind of plan together to make sure that everybody who would be operating this is, you know, qualified and trained as best we can train them, and that maybe, you know, a single designated person with perhaps a backup if they're ill or can't make it, somebody who's really very responsible, you know, maybe even at an intern level, but, you know, it's there to do, to make sure they know how to run it, make sure they can fix it, to, you know, have the courage to walk out from that door and say, we got a problem, we got to stop, give me 10 minutes, see if I can fix it. And also, who, somebody, you know, on top of it, maybe it's everybody here up at the board, or maybe one person gets designated, but a little bit more due diligence, making sure we're always turning our microphones on. I know I've blown that a couple of times myself.
Right, Roger?
Thank you, Mr. Kadala. Those are a few valid and good points. The situation is such that Jeff Murmas, the assistant to the city manager, does have a backup with regard to our video texts, and he, too, has got a program in place. And getting back to your suggestions or commentary with regard to the minutes, the minutes is really a collaborative effort between the minute taker, as well as staff, and anyone else who is present at the meeting, and we would certainly make sure that all the minutes, as they are presented as such, are as accurate and complete as possible.
Mrs. Cope?
Well, you mentioned that the assistant manager has a backup. What is the backup?
He does have additional personnel or people that he can call on.
Okay, I'm talking about equipment failure. Is there any consideration to just audio only in addition?
Well, we can certainly look in to see if there's a situation whereby we can at least get audio on the recording device. That's something that I really don't have the answer to right now, but in some instances, I would imagine the system could be split between audio and visual or both, but we'll certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question now. We have this video equipment, audio equipment. Now, is there a log that somebody checks, you know, they check it out before the meeting? Or is it a surprise every night when it's used? I mean, do you check it at 4:00 in the evening or in the afternoon before they go home and make sure it's functioning rather than waiting until 7:30 when our meeting starts and all of a sudden, you know, it's not working? And the other thing is, now, you have a minute taker. Now, whoever takes the minutes, they bring it to your office so you can review them and make sure all the information is in there, or we just take the rough copy or the copy of the minute taker's minutes and it's not reviewed by your staff or yourself?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Presently, as has been our procedure in the past, Marilyn emails the minutes, as she has them, transcribed to me. Then, I review them, and if there are any questions or concerns, we talk back and forth or we email back and forth in order to gain consensus on that. Also, to answer your question with regard to the video systems here, they are checked daily.
Okay. Is there any other questions? Is there anybody in objection to the petition or any member of the general public intends to wishes to make a comment or has a question for the petitioner? If so, please stand and be placed under oath. Others don't seem to be any objections. Roger, is there staff recommendation concerning this petition?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends the approval as is laid out in the memo dated November 7, 2006, from Ross Clicker, the Community and Economic Development Assistant. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Mr. Nowak from the board concerning the staff recommendation? Hearing done, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Later during this meeting, the board will commence deliberations on petitioner's requests. Is there a motion? Motion is second?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second? Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mr. Kadala?
Yes.
Dr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Crusiani?
Yes.
Chairman Sye?
Yes, this motion is carried. The case, the public hearing on case number 06-ta-15 is closed.
Thank you for all your efforts in our behalf over the years.
Will the secretary please call the roll for our meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Mrs. Cope?
Here.
Mrs. Schroeder?
Here.
Mr. Kadala?
Here.
Dr. Madonna?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Crusiani?
Here.
Chairman Sye?
Here. I need approval of minutes of September 18, 2006. Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Cope?
Yes.
Mrs. Schroeder?
Yes.
Mr. Kadala?
Yes.
Dr. Madonna?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Crusiani?
Yes.
Chairman Sye?
Yes. Okay, the first item we have is the case number 06-z10, J.D. Land Development LLC, 480 Forest Reserve Drive, rezone from R1 to R3, single-family residence district. Note, this case is managed by the City Council at a meeting of October 19, 2006. Are petitioners here?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Good evening. Appreciate everyone giving us the opportunity to come to the board. And we wanted to update you on our progress at 480 Forest Preserve. As you know, that was our intention to rezone this property from R1 to R3 and resubdivide it.
We've met with this board, I believe, more than one occasion, as well as a couple other boards in the process, and we have heard loud and clear the input from all the bodies involved in terms of density, in terms of drainage, in terms of the radius of the cul-de-sac and the width of the street. So, what we'd like to represent to you this evening is a revised plan that incorporates every issue that has been brought forward to us, both through the Benison Associates, the firm of Benison Associates, through this board and the council. So, we have it.
Excuse me, before you continue, could you give our minute taker your card so she can put that on record and whoever's going to speak? I'm sorry, I'm, you know...
Thank you.
So, what you see on the overhead projector on the screen there is a reconfiguration that is in, pardon me, it's in compliance with the ordinance in terms of square footage and setbacks and every other aspect of the ordinance. We've changed the density to six lots per everyone's recommendation, and we've, even though we thought the prior drainage was adequate per all the engineering, we've beefed it up to include additional sewers, and I have our engineer further discuss that. But, as a whole, you see each of the lots are larger, therefore addressing density. They all meet the requirements regarding square footage and setbacks, and we've addressed the width of the street and the radius. So, if there's any commentary, we'd love to hear it at this point.
Okay, you, what did you do to the streets? What did you do to the radius? Are you complying with the subdivision code now or what?
Yes, we are in compliance, and I'll have my engineer address that specifically for you.
The pavement is 100 feet now. 20 feet more in diameter than the joining subdivision to the east. The right-of-way is the 120 as required, and the width of the roadway is 66 feet as required, and the pavement is the standard 28 feet that you have in Wooddale.
Okay, the last time you were here, you said that you couldn't put the sewers in there, so now, I see you have it on there. Now, did you try to deceive us the last time or?
I said the storm sewer, I said we have to lower the water main to do this properly now. The water main on Forest Preserve has to be lowered so that we can put the storm sewer in. The way the existing utilities were, I mean, everything could be always done with money. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't, and the whole thing is, we were trying not to lower the water main. We've lowered the water main now so that we can put the storm sewer in. We've extended the storm sewer up to approximately 2/3 of the lot distances so that the drainage from the homes can be put into the storm sewer so that it doesn't have to go down the swales. And, of course, you're still going to get water from the yard that's going to go into the swales, and we've done everything you asked for.
Even though you're putting the storm sewers in there, you're still putting the swales in?
Well, water has to get to the storm source. And usually, the best way to do that is to have your house a little higher, and the swale directs the water to the inlets. Otherwise, if you have everything flat, then the water just lays there. It has to be directed some way.
Can you give a little help with gravity?
Okay. And another couple of quick questions. Naturally, you're putting sidewalk in this project.
That's correct.
And street lighting?
If there's a request for a street light, that would be put in, too, if that's what you want.
That could be a cop.
Well, we've been recommending to any new subdivisions come in or to put our prairie lights in like we have along Wooddale Road there, rather than one big, one big light in the cul-de-sac there. I think it's going to be a quality project here, so I think putting a couple of prairie lights in there, providing you get enough illumination, you know, for safety factor, is something you could work out with the building department. But, you know, it's going to be, like I say, it's going to be an upgrade, grade of subdivision here, so it'd be a little bit more classy.
I'd recommend three, one in the cul-de-sac, one as you get into the cul-de-sac as far as the circle, and then, of course, the normal thing that you always have a light at the intersection, so persons could tell where the street is at night. So, I'd recommend three, and that's about as many as you'd want in such a short street.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board? Dr. Madonna?
Just, can you just, because I don't have my mind drawing, can you show me what your, where your storm sewer is and where it's draining to?
Here's the storm sewer.
Okay.
There's an inlet here, there's inlets down here, right at the intersection, and then this goes over to the one-property line. The storm sewer continues on to here, and each of the property lines has its own catch basin and a catch basin further up in the lot.
Can you tell me what the different elevations would be to any one of the catch basins that you're talking about at the cul-de-sac area as to where it's draining to and what the differential of those elevations would be?
Well, that hasn't been calculated yet. This is a relatively flat area. There's two choices we can do here. We can continue the road all the way straight up if we wanted to, or we could put a little high point in here and keep that drainage in the cul-de-sac and probably put another inlet in there. That would, that's usually in the final design. In other words, right now, I do have one inlet here, and the way I designed it right now is that the cul-de-sac would have a high point right around here, and the water would go around this way to that inlet, and, of course, on this side, it would go all the way down to this inlet. But this way... But this way, most of the cul-de-sac would be coming into this inlet instead of all coming around like here and going to a double inlet down here. Now, as I said, I could put a little high point in here, and it'd be very easy, if I put a high point in here, to move this inlet over here and keep as much of the cul-de-sac water going into an inlet instead of coming down and going to the intersection, because leaves always have a tendency to clog the drains, and when I was an engineer in Ohio, I used to tell the people, you know, if you have water in front of your house, you should go out there and don't wait till the city people come and clean the inlets because you might, you might be the last one on the line. Clean the inlet while you're there. I mean, not go into it, but clean the leaves off. And most of those people would do that then if you ask them the right way. As I said, the water line is, the water line's on this side. I'm sorry, sorry, that's a sanitary sewer, and then the water is here, hydrant here, and we might consider putting a hydrant right at the intersection, too, because then that way it gives you that much added protection here because there is no hydrants available from the back, because you'd have to go all the way to the next street, and you'd have to go around the apartments, and the fire, the fire engines, I mean, the fire hoses are not going to, I'm not sure, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Mr. Crusiani? Mrs. Capp? No? Mr. Caddala? Okay, what are you going to do for green space, planting trees or what?
We have already submitted to you the landscape plan. It should be in those booklets.
That was for a seven lot, but except for the homes, we tried to save all of the trees out because we're not changing the grades as much here. All of the trees that are on the, on the border, none of those trees are damaged.
Okay.
Most of these lines, I tried to make sure that we didn't damage or remove any trees here in the home areas and within 5 to 10 feet of the house. There's nothing you can do about that. But you can notice these are mostly squares.